Because of what you went through, but you gotta go. We're buying you out so you can go somewhere where you don't have to go through this again, and basically call us again in a year or two. So they're willing to help. There's also a program that came from that where the governor has applied for some additional funds to lower the owners or property owners' participation percentage, or to even alleviate it, because typically it's like 25% FEMA pays 75 and you pay 25, or the city if they have it, however the program is, because there's several different ones. Hurricane Harvey was such a disaster that a lot of new things have come from this experience at the state and the federal level regarding Texas and Louisiana and the others that were impacted by it. So a lot of good things are happening to try to assist people with this. Yes ma'am?
And also one other thing that they would help us with over in the areas, they would be getting the study for flooding in that area. So they would also help us put together a study so we can understand why it's flooding, how it's flooding, everything, and then that would basically be called our drainage project.
Oh, wait a minute. That kind of changes things, so you've been holding out on me. Because what we were told was if we do a flood study and then we follow up with what the study suggests, they would incorporate the study funds in there. So if this is the case now, we may not have to pay for the initial. So that's, again, that's great information and a lot of different meetings that are being attended to, again, bring back whatever we can to assist our affected residents. Anything else on that from the council?
Mr. Mayor, we're talking about coming up to our, when are we going to get a draft contract? We have budget ending September, and we have emergency contract with USW, so should we start to get a, what is gonna look like, what are some parameters to be paying, as you know, over here is on our current account, so if we can get in front of that.
Absolutely. We are working on that as well as posting, because we really can't get, we have to post it. The thing is, because of Hurricane Harvey over the last, what, a year and a half now, or was it one or two, the problem is USW is intricately entwined in assisting us and the work with FEMA. Fortunately, quite a bit of the work they've done has been a combination of FEMA, which acts like an insurance, as well as our Texas Municipal League Insurance. So the combination has really generated quite a bit back. I think the last number Mr. Johnson and I had was closing in on $100,000, and that was just with TML insurance claims. But their intricacy in helping us wrap up this major project, that's where it's kind of sketchy, but yes, definitely on the table. Yes, sir.
The reason why I brought it up is not the fact that we don't want to retain the services of USW, it's the fact that we pay 10%, we pay 10 to 15% surcharge on everything we do because we're in an emergency contract. And so here's an opportunity for us to be able to reduce costs by bringing them to the table. Since they're so intricately entwined in what we're doing, they should see that they've been making money. But right now, we're paying additional 10 to 15% just because. And I think the sooner we put that on the table and we start moving forward, that allows us to be able to get that. My other question?
Oh, no, let me respond to that one, because there's something you need to know just in case. We can't sign in excess of $50,000 contract without being put out the bid. Right now, that kind of work for that type of company, it would be in excess of $50,000. So we can't sign a contract with them, and if we post it and something comes up with someone else and it interferes with all the paperwork and the insurance claims and stuff that they're doing with FEMA, that's, again, that's why I say we're treading, we're close, because we're trying to wrap these things up. And I certainly, as you know, my concerns about those type of things financially, but we can't just select them. We have to put it out the bid by state law, so, but again, we're trying to go exactly where you want to go. Next, you have another question?
I think somebody else I think had one, and I do have one. Oh, my question was with USW, when I looked at the budget reconciliation and budget report from Mr. JJ, and I've been, we've been talking with USW there at our last meeting, how do they, do they invoice, do they use a PO? How do they, because I think last time, I think council was surprised that, you know, we got a report saying something was going to cost us much and ended up being two, three times higher. Do we have, do they fill out a PO, a purchase order, where are we just going by what they say they did, or what is that process? Can they work on anything without going to you first, and is that POed? Or what's that process so council can be prepared?
Sure. Actually, it depends. With a lot of what they do, it's reactionary because it's an emergency. For example, I've been out there with them as late as midnight on the Greenfield lift station, and there was no opportunity for a PO or anything. We had backups and we had to make things happen. So it really depends. We do try to circle around, we do get an invoice from them, for sure. Those things have been shared with council previously, and of course, we can continue to share them. But it does show the work they did, where they did it, whether or not they had to call in one of those huge vacuum trucks that are extremely expensive. Our backups around the city have been a major nightmare and extremely costly, especially when it happens after five or six, and we have to call someone in on emergency out of Houston, particularly with those vac trucks, because our equipment just can't handle what needs to be done. So it's a combination. If we know in advance, absolutely, a PO in an emergency situation, I'll get a note from, a text or a call from them, we'll discuss it. Sometimes I'm talking to Mr. Glover, if somebody's got backup going in their house, call in what you need, because I think that's our responsibility to our people. If the sewer system's not working, it's the city's responsibility. But while we're on that, let me say that, and while we're on the public works thing particularly, it was mentioned earlier that someone said they had to unclog their own situation and that sort of thing. Some of you may know, most of you may not, and again, for the benefit of council, if it's on what we call the city side, then the city is responsible to fix it. We just finished two homes on Elm Street where it backed up. It was a city problem based on what Mr. Glover, Mr. Melendez shared with me, and I told them, we have to fix it. In the situation that was shared a little earlier, it just so happens that Mr. Melendez had gone to that home like four or five months previously. There was a leak in the home coming out of the back of the home, and I just had them document everything, because of work orders, what we call it. And then when they were called back, the lady shared with them what was going on and was trying to insist on them to fix it, and I only asked one question, is it ours or is it theirs? If it's on the city side, call whoever you need to call, because we are supposed to do what we're supposed to do. We got responsibilities. If it's on the residential side, as was noted, we're not supposed to go on the residential side. So on one hand, you know, we're told, you know, we didn't go on the residential side, and in that same conversation, we were told, you're not supposed to go. But if it's a city responsibility, I assure you, and our guys, Mr. Glover, Mr. Melendez, Mr. Villanueva, those two have been working in excess of 50 years in the water sewer industry. One of them was with Severn Trent when Severn Trent ran this whole area for the city of Prairie View. So I count on them, they've been more than reliable, and when they say it's on the residential side, no, we're not gonna fix it, because as you heard earlier, in that same conversation, we can't, we're not supposed to. But anyway, again, just in sharing with council, if you all get a call or something, we'll send our people out. We've been blessed, primarily Mr. Glover's good, but Mr. Melendez is the water sewer expert. So we've been blessed that unless with those couple of times when he, you know, gone home to Mexico, he would come out. I mean, he answers the phone, and he's willing to come out and check on behalf of the city after hours on weekends and holidays. And Chief, you'll vouch with me, he was out there with me and you in that tree crossed over Wyatt Chapel, and nobody had the equipment, the county couldn't get to us during the hurricane, and he came out, he grabbed our backhoe, and he wouldn't move the thing. So we've got some very good people that are wonderfully supportive of helping to keep our city operation run. And all of you and all of you need to know that, because unless we share it with you in times like this, understandably, you don't know until it's your commode, it's not backing up. Then, you know, we'll do what we need to do, and certainly try to work with you. But that's basically the process. And in those situations, again, after hours and in emergencies, offices close, and we just do it, and then they do a activity report, work order on that. Any other public works questions by council? Okay. In tax collections, just want to give you a very quick update. Spoke with the managing partner of Linebarger, they're the ones who do our tax collections as recent as earlier today, and our archive accounts, which are several hundred thousand dollars. What that means is it's an old account, the person's no longer in that property, and they left owing the city typically quite a bit of money. And so we're finalizing, and they're working with Ms. Durham and the company whose program we use, and they're having to do some conversions, for lack of a better word, I don't know all that technical stuff with computers, but they're having to convert what we're using to their system so we can do it electronically, and then locally, quite a few folks, even some of the people in here, volunteered to do some separating about a year ago. So that part's moving, we're going after the money that people owe the city, as well as, as I was speaking with Ms. Durham a little over a week ago, our numbers of delinquent clients have, customers have gone, has gone down drastically, and we're working with everybody else who does owe us to get on a payment plan, because it's not the city's intent to shut anyone's water off if we can come to any reasonable agreement. And we're usually willing to work with what the person can based on their circumstances is willing to pay. So residents and council understand that process, because that's what I have to make decisions on almost every day. But I've got a system down with Ms. Durham, so she now knows what we're looking for, and she's able to make those decisions with public work. She doesn't have to call me if someone can't pay, and you put them on a payment plan, and you know, let's see what we can do to work out. You don't have to call, because that's what I'm gonna do. So now she understands it and the percentages we try to do. So, you know, again, we're just working on your behalf to keep the city running like we feel you want it to. The city council reports. Council Rowland.
Good evening, citizens of the great city of Prairie View, Texas. I've had the opportunity to represent not only the city, but represent the city in many of the hats that I wear in this community and around the state. I will first talk, one, to remind you that the Prairie Chamber of Commerce has their meeting on Thursday, the 26th, at 12:00 PM at the Alumna Building. The Boy Scouts are back from their cap in Oklahoma. They were able to earn several badges and they have their quarter of honor. So please be on the lookout for that information, so you can come and support those young men in our community who are continuing to move forward. I had the opportunity to go to Fort Worth for our board meeting for the TABCCM, which is the Texas Association of Black City Council Members, where former councilwoman Marie Herning had the ability, was the former chairwoman of that organization. It's an organization that is there to help elected officials who are from different cities around the state of Texas. We're an affiliate of TML, which is Texas Municipal League, and that is how we get professional development, that is how we come up with, get presentations, that's how we come up with speakers on budgeting issues or infrastructure issues, talking with attorneys. I had the opportunity to go represent the city, because I was asking for the organization to come, to come to the city of Prairie View to host their board meeting here. And we, the organization voted that August 25th, 2018, that they'll be in the great city of Prairie View, both that Friday evening for dinner and then all day Saturday. And so please, if you're around, we'll have other elected officials who happen to be African-American will be here from around the state of Texas to have their board meeting. I mean, that's a good thing, I think, if you looked at the current TML magazine, our organization's featured in there. And so I also had the opportunity to write an article that will be in the September issue, again, representing city of Prairie View, the city councilman. This magazine is for all local elected officials around the state of Texas, but really just talking about some of the experiences and some of the things that I've gained representing the city, going to workshops for that TML had actually paid for for me to go, to get more information to how we better the city. So I think that's a great thing. I think when the mayor or any city councilman goes to represent the community any other place, we are representing the people, and so it's good that we bring that information back. I also had the opportunity, the National NAACP was in San Antonio, we celebrated 109 years of active service in the community. I had the opportunity to do a number of things, but I'll just touch on two things. One, you had, there's an honor, which is the Spring Guard Honor. The honoree on Wednesday was Willie Brown, the former mayor of San Francisco, and the person who introduced him was President Bill Clinton. Now, the reason why I bring that up is because what I would like to do, and would love anyone in the community and anyone on the dais who wants to help, to Willie Brown actually is from Minota, Texas. He actually went to Prairie View A and M University and got kicked out. That's how he got to San Francisco. That's how he became the mayor, and that's how he rose to become Speaker of the House in the General Assembly in California. The reason why I say this is because here's an opportunity for us to engage not only his work he's done in San Francisco, but now it nudged the university to bring him to Prairie View, so we can then start collaboration around how we move forward. And so that's why I bring that up, so that's why it's important that we get out to city of Prairie View. Second, I had the opportunity to participate with Wells Fargo where I have a grant. Many, some citizens in the room have want to, one of the programs facilitated by Wells Fargo, either on campus or in the community, where we received another $10,000 till this time to focus on homeownership. And so again, if you have ideas or you have people who want to go through a program put on through Wells Fargo, we want to start helping the mayor and many councils trying to bring new homeowners to the city of Prairie View. And so here's an opportunity for us to collaborate on projects and opportunities. My Brothers Keepers program, the city of Houston and the city of Austin contacted me in reference to pulling together My Brothers Keepers Texas Conference that will happen in the spring. This conference will pull together all the My Brothers Keepers organizations and affiliates in the state of Texas for Dr. Brown. My Brothers Keepers program was started in 2014 with President Barack Obama, and this program was set up in reference to a series of programs, there's a wraparound services, everything from criminal justice to education and finance around how do we get people more engaged, more involved in our community. And so what we're trying to do is, one, wrap around all the different programs that are going on here in our community, but also engage other larger cities, because the city of Prairie View was one of the three cities in 2014 that was noted in President, from President Obama. There was three in Texas, it was Houston, Austin, and Prairie View, Texas. And so that's why we're trying to, again, engage more people, and I did definitely love your ideal about the senior citizens council, so I definitely would like to talk with you about that. Had the opportunity to represent the city at the New Leaders Council, they had their annual conference in Houston, and that was a great opportunity, because you had a state representative named Michael Blake, and I don't know if y'all have heard of him. Michael Blake was, he actually ran for the, what? He ran for a party chair of a different party, and he became the vice, he became the vice chair. And so he was talking about, at this workshop, he was talking about opportunities for, to engage more communities, both in budgeting, financing, and about P3 partnerships. And we'll talk about why P3 is gonna be important later. Again, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to continue to serve here in the city of Prairie View, and if, again, if you, again, want to find out where I'm at, we, the Boy Scouts meet here at this, in this building on the first and third Wednesday, and we have the Prairie Chamber of Commerce on the last Thursday of every month, and you, or you can get in contact with me by cellphone or email. Thank you for allowing me to serve.
Thank you, I'll be brief. As you can hear my voice, I'm still, still kind of getting, getting over. For those who don't know, first I apologize, I missed this month's meeting, first meeting of the month, because I was in the hospital sick for a couple of days in Dallas, I went to Dallas to visit in the hospital, staying alone, and I attended. But the only thing I always want to highlight today is August 4th is our Hustle Sports Youth Camp. We're still registering kids, we have over 100 kids registered. It's a free camp for any kid, five to 15, that plays football. If you know somebody, if you have a child, it's the only free camp that you're gonna get in probably 30 to 40 mile radius. We have coaches who have played at every level of football, who donate their time, and we just really enjoy the experience and giving back to these, to these kids in our community. So get your child registered at hustlesporsetexas.com, and August 4th, we look forward to seeing Let me thank the Chamber of Commerce for donating to Hustle Sports, also the Prairie Police Department, Mr. Shakins here, so Walla County Pay My Day donated every year, and his son is a rising star, and I can't beat him, he's old here, and I can't, now it's starting off young, and this will be a study to participate. So we thank everybody for this community support, and we look forward into our camp opportunity to grow and blossom. Thank you.
Yeah, Council Wallace.
Okay, so I'll keep my brief so we can get back to business, but for one, so I've been talking about this ministry called Abundant Panes Ministry, which is meant for community service, and I think it's a great way to bridge the gap in the community for, you know, students that want to help out in outer parts of the city, it's an opportunity for the citizens that want to help out other citizens, you know, a part of the, this is an opportunity. So Abundant Panes Ministry was started with me and Ms. Alana Gaskin, what's her name? There you go. So the goal is, we're connecting to a church right now to be solidified there, so that, you know, if you want to contact the ministry, you can, and just to give kind of a synopsis of something that we did, one citizen, he has some financial hardship, and he couldn't get his grass cut, and so he was gonna get fined for it. I was told by Ms. Marie Herning, and so me and a couple of guys are getting together to go help cut his grass, you know, so that he doesn't get fined, and just little things like that that can help the community go forward. So sooner or later, we're gonna have a flyer out, so if anyone needs to contact or anything, you know, please contact us, because the goal is at one point, later on, we want to create a donation center here in Prairie View, a community service center, so that we can potentially help each other from the inside. Also, a couple of citizens, they work out at the rec center, but of course, as you know, the rec center, you know, a lot of university students, so there's, a lot of the classes are crowded and whatnot, so I talked to Mr. Tony Daniels, who's over the rec center, and we discussed having classes just for citizens outside of the university. He said it'd be a great idea, so if you go into the office, there's this flyer that talks about rec center fitness. So what we're asking, he asks us to do is, if you're interested, please just contact me or Councilman Jones through our emails, let us know, one, that you want to, you want to have classes, and two, what kind of classes you want. And so we'll coordinate with him so that we can have classes just for y'all, so please let us know. Okay? She said, "How am I doing?" Oh, oh, I'm sorry. And so, of course, you would have to be a member of the rec center, but this is, this is an initiative that if, one, I'm trying to talk with him, so maybe for those that may not have a membership, one, just for like at least a monthly community gathering, at least for that, but for if it's gonna be something regular, he just say you have to be a member of the rec center. I recently went to an EMT meeting, an emergency meeting, for any type of emergency that may happen within the city, especially since the hurricane season. So they were talking about the CIRC program, which was the Community Emergency Response Team. So there I was challenged, you know, of course, with my youth, you know, to try to get students involved as well. So right now, we got 15 students that are willing to sign up just from the summer to get trained, so that, you know, if something happens to our city, we can all work together and move forward, and I'm looking forward to getting more students as we continue to get training. I just started my master's program in community development, so I'm looking forward to working with mayor and council and bringing that new knowledge so that we continually develop this community in a way that's supposed to. It's the, I've asked, me and Councilman Jones, we've asked Judge Duhon for the Walla County, put into local agreements so that we can be able to decipher what city roads and county roads, so we can move forward with that. And I also, I always challenge, please go to the commissioner's court Wednesday at 9:00 AM, because we want to be involved, you know, as the city for Walla County. Prairie Chamber of Commerce, Councilman Rowland said, the meeting's on Thursday at 12:00. I just challenged someone from Economic 4B to be there at the meeting to, you know, represent Economic 4B, and I challenged for Prairie Chamber of Commerce people to come to Economic 4B meeting, so add the two economic entities that we can work together, you know, to continually move the city forward. A citizen had some concerns about the Panther Hills, so I went to talk to the Panther Hills project manager, got a lot of the question answered. One thing I wanted to bring to council and Mayor Allen, they were talking about the concern of having so many students and from Brookside and Panther Hills coming in and out, and sooner or later, that street can get congested, and to prevent any real traffic issues or problems, that maybe we should look towards, have some type of sign there, stop signs, try to like if it gets, you know, really congested, so that, you know, the safety first. Let's see, planning and zoning, I went to a planning and zoning meeting, we're there, that community is definitely working hard to move the city forward, and I hope that we can make some sound decisions. I know there's some citizens, like Dr. Hawkins, that have projects on the way that need approval and acceptance, so we're continually working towards that. And last thing is, I really believe that it's important that we keep the history of the city, how it began, because I, you know, you know throughout history, if you lose the history, anything could happen. Right now, a lot of the Prairie View history is at Tuskegee Institute, so my goal is trying to find a way to bring a lot of information back, so we can continually educate those now and future of how the city was built upon, so that we don't lose, you know, what we, what we started. But other than that, I want to thank y'all for allowing me to serve y'all in the great city of Prairie.
Quick question, how many people here attended or worked at Prairie View A and M University or have family members that did? Raise your hand. Okay. So every now and then, if we mention something with collaborating with Prairie View, it's because of all of us. We're a college town, and our university is the second oldest institution in the state, and only three are designated as institutions of the first class. What I found in coming in was often there were other people taking more advantage of our university than we were. They went right through the city, didn't bother to contact the city, and it's sort of like, I can't come to your house without letting you know. So we worked on and changed that, but we've also been doing things. So we worked on and changed that, but we've also been doing things with the university. Uh, one of the things I want to share and, and I will speak quickly so, because it, it's on the agenda. But there was a, a trip to the sister city of Watchave, Colombia. It's an Afro-Colombian city with simply beams that, and that's the flag. Uh, former mayor Jackson and the city council, uh, set up that sister city agreement, uh, six years ago with my predecessor and the predecessor of the mayor there. Um, but we have some things going on now. There, we're, we're in the process of doing an M O U between the city, the university, and the University of Calca of Papayan in Colombia for our ag research. They're very interested in the research at our institution. Our institution has relationships with Japan, China, Mexico, and maybe a couple of other places. So these are some things that are, are going on to take that to a different level. Uh, but the city's extremely interesting, ninety percent, uh, black, ninety-eight percent Spanish speaking. So you learn to use the translator real quick. That's how me and the mayor communicate. But we've got a lot of nice things going there. Uh, the Alta Vista, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar community development block grant is about to go out for a request for proposal. So that work will be starting very soon. Um, spoke with, uh, one of the engineers on the project that the city has selected, uh, when we first went after that grant and we're blessed to receive it. So all the paperwork's in, all approvals are done. So they're working with the project manager and engineer to get that project. And that is strictly a sewer upgrade, uh, old clay pipes. And one thing, again, I, I've said it before, but I think it needs mentioning again, is once we went after the grant and were blessed to receive it, I stepped back and put the project manager, the city engineer, and Mr. Darrell Glover, who's our most experienced person on what we need in the city, historically repairs, all that stuff. And they selected Alta Vista. I had nothing to do with it and the engineer was here and made that clear. And I think that's important that you know because I happen to be a resident of Alta Vista. Um, I'm glad to be a homeowner in the city of Prairie View and a property owner, so I don't have a problem with that. That's just happened, but I wanted you to know and understand I had nothing to do with the selection process. I think it's, it's important that, especially now we're at the point where, uh, that work is about to be done. Um, I was blessed and asked to be the speaker of the thirty-sixth infrastructure conference on the campus a couple of weeks ago. And basically what that is, it entails the, uh, super tankers being able to come through the Panama Canal. The city of Freeport have the congressional approval to do the dredging. And thirty-six A is basically a highway that they're looking to build from Freeport up to two ninety somewhere. I stay on that board and try to stay involved because Prairie View is listed on the map. It may change, but it will still affect us in a positive way because all those goods and services are going to pass through Walla County to Oklahoma.